David, kind of fell in turpits.
I didn't try to play it, no.
He just came out and jagged his food and went back in. None of us.
Well, it's a big day for you, congratulations. That's awesome. That's awesome. We'll have a nice picture of you. Probably have to say something.
Yeah, just do rounds. Just wipe your mouth and you'll be good.
Wes will tell you why he's good.
They're good, they're loving the snowy weather on spring break. I don't know, we were up at John's house all day.
It was too wet.
But we were getting Michael's out. All of my kids up in the closet downstairs, the decoration closet, we go up and down. Emptying it. So we can go through it. I think Glenn might have two hundred Willy's. Or, what are they called? Yeah, the Willy's.
I don't know about that, but. Yes. We all really. I thought, I just brought out the video. I'm glad you weren't there.
But between the other ones, we've said.
And he couldn't talk, and we were like, what? Yep. People don't, people don't believe it until they show them pictures and then they're like. They kept giving him kisses, they just pick them up and be like. So people, they don't believe it, like, and then they're always like.
There's probably better babies than you, but there's not many, not many.
Bring me, bring me the deal, let's, let's, let's see what we can do. That's exactly. That's exactly. You know, that seats are too nice for me.
His posse's in there. Go time, right? What are you waiting for?
The other way around, absolutely. It's still our steak, it's. East of the lake. Steak, or the Fergie's steak, or the Kinnear's steak. But back in the day. They've changed a couple of times. No. Yeah, he would have been, he still would have been peacefully when you were there.
I hear.
I'm thinking something, you're a guy. Think stuff like that all.
Be honest.
Okay, we've got the thumbs up to get started tonight in city council meeting in Spanish Fork. Thank you everyone for joining us in person and online all over the world and, and thanks for coming out on April Fool's Day where the weather figures that it wanted to be funny. So, uh, thank you for, for joining us here in person and, and a quick thanks to our, uh, streets, uh, folks that got out there and, and got on the roads as soon as possible today too to help us all get around. We appreciate everyone being here for council meeting. Uh, we'll get started like we always do with a prayer or motivational message. And then the pledge of allegiance, uh, Councilwoman Beck has the prayer and then Councilmember Marshall will lead us in the pledge.
So I have asked Richard Davis to come up, is it going to be Richard or? Okay, I guess I kind of offered it to either one of you. He has a quick message and a prayer? Thank you.
Mayor, council members, thank you for this opportunity. It's good to be back and to see everybody smiling faces. Me and Tamara just got done watching Family Feud. And one of the questions there was how, what are some of the things that a politician is famous for? There was two answers, cheating and lying. So I would like to talk about integrity, how's that? Um, integrity defines the greatness of men and women. Integrity is the purity of mind and heart. Integrity defines the honesty with oneself, with God and his fellow man. It is, it is the very core of our being. It is who we really are when all the scaffolding is removed. It is our integrity that both defines us and identifies us. With integrity, there are no alibis or excuses. It is straight up, it is who you are. A man or woman of integrity will do the right, no matter what the consequences. Absolute honesty with oneself, our character demands it and defines us. Brother Sterling W. Sill, a city leader many years ago, once was driving down the street and got thirsty, so he pulled into a service station. Walked up to the pop machine and put a dime in, now you can imagine how long ago that was. Put a dime in. He got a soda pop, but he also got his dime back. He took the dime and put it in his pocket and he says, ah, they charge too much anyway for this stuff. But as he wa- was walking out, his conscience got to him and he says, Sterling, are you really going to be a thief for a dime? And he says, of course not. The price is not nearly enough. A small sum, but a great principle. The story of the hog and the eagle. Now the hog, he gets up in the morning and he wallows in the mud. Somebody will feed him and he continues to eat and then he goes back and wallows in the mud. And when the day is over, what does he do? He wallows in the mud. Now the eagle, he gets up in the morning, he goes out and finds food for his family. He fixes his nest or his home, as you would want to call it. He sits and protects his family and protects his community. And then at night, he takes off and flies into the heavens and kisses the face of God. Shakespeare understood what, 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 what integrity wa- was when he quoted, "My honor is my life, both grow and one. Take honor from one and my life is done." Close quote. Every time we cheat ourselves out of our integrity and our birthright, we sell our souls for a mess of pottage. I hope we never sell our souls for a price. When I was on the city council, I was up Salt Lake one day at the League of Cities meeting and David Church, who was, was an attorney at the time for the League of Cities, stated to us, "May you serve with wisdom, may you look at the issues and note what will be best for the citizens that live here, whether they live in posterity or in poverty." And I say, it's about aligning yourselves and your actions with your values and your commitments. One last story. A man and his five-year-old boy was driving down a country road and he passed a beautiful field that was full of sweet corn. So he pulled over, got out of his truck, looked one way, made sure there was nothing coming, looked the other way, made sure there was nothing coming, jumped the fence and started to pick the sweet corn. And his five-year-old boy stuck his head out the window and says, Dad, you forgot to look up. May you serve the great city of Spanish Fork, the city of pride and progress with integrity. And remember to always look up. Without God, we are lost. Now I can say a prayer. Our dear kind Father in heaven, we're thankful for the opportunity we had to be here tonight at this city council meeting. We're thankful for these wonderful men and women that served this city and loved this city with all their heart and mind and strength. We ask a special blessing on the mayor and the council to give them the straight, strength and integrity that they need to leave and search this wonderful city. Continue to be with the staff, that they will have the knowledge and wisdom to work with the council, to work with the citizens and work with their employees. Continue to be with our employees for, and give them protection and pride as they work with the infrastructures of the city. Continue to be with our emergency protection people. Continue to give them the knowledge and protection that they need as they serve and protect our city with honor. And continue to be with our citizens to give them joy and happiness and the values that they need to continue to know how to serve each other, how to use volunteerism in our city, this great wonderful city of pride and progress. We're thankful for all these blessings you truly provide for us each and every day. And we say these things in the sacred name, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Richard.
Thanks, Richard. May all please, please rise and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, thanks for participating, thank you for, for those thoughts. Councilman Richard Davis, once a councilman, always a councilman, I think, is how it goes. Uh, takes us to a recognition section of our agenda. Uh, we've got, uh, a couple of recognitions here tonight. The first one, Tori Callahan will be recognizing, is Tori, yes, there you are. And then we'll go to Tyler Jacobson after your recognition. Is this Hallie?
This is Hallie.
Right.
Um, so just wanted to take a moment and recognize Hallie. Um, so we offered, this year we offered a fun shot competition for our junior jazz participants. Um, and Hallie actually won at the finals, she won for her age group, which is really exciting. Um, so for those of you who don't know what the fun shot is, um, we have a partnership with the Utah Jazz, that's how we run our, uh, youth basketball program. And, um, they basically, they offer this fun shot competition and you're able, the different cities that are part of junior jazz can host their own local competition. Um, and then the local competitions are able to send the top couple participants from each age group to a regional competition. And then at the regional competition, um, the, they, they send one participant from each of the age groups to the finals. So, um, we actually had four of the eight divisions. Um, Spanish Fork was recognized, or was represented by our participants in four of the eight divisions, which is really exciting. Um, and then Hallie went and was able to perform well enough at the finals that she won for her age group. So what it is, is it's basically a skills competition, um, mostly based on shooting. Um, but they also, they have to get their own rebounds and they have to dribble from spot to spot. So just showcasing, you know, athletic ability and, and shooting and all of that, so, um, really proud of Hallie and the way that she represented Spanish Fork and just thought it was a very cool opportunity and, and, uh, just really awesome that she was able to go in our first year bringing it back. Um, we hadn't, we hadn't offered it in over ten years and just decided to bring it back this year and it's, you know, just kind of as a fun thing to try and it's great that we were so successful at it, having some participants make it to the finals and even having Hallie win, so that was very cool.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Does anybody want to ask Hallie some questions?
When do you start for the Jazz?
Hallie, how old were you when you started practicing basketball, dribbling and shooting? Is it something you've always done?
Um, well, I've been doing it for a long time.
Long time, how old are you now?
Ten, I just turned ten.
And you've been doing it for a long time, that's awesome.
Are you a better shot than your mom and dad? She's questioning it.
Tell us, what's your mom and dad's name?
Katie and Rich.
Katie and Rich, and is this your brother?
Yes.
What's his name?
Sampson.
Sampson, does he play ball too? Sometimes it's one versus, it's one-on-one?
Yes.
Nice.
All right, you look about the same height, that's probably a pretty good game, isn't it? Yeah, yeah.
So Hallie, are you going to be able to defend your title next year? How does that work? Different, different age group, right, but though, still be able to do it again?
What was your favorite part of the competition?
Um. All of it.
All of it? Was it more fun to being up on the, on the big stage at, at the, at the Delta Center?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did you get, did you get to meet the Jazz bear or any of the Jazz players?
No.
They weren't there, huh, maybe next year, we'll, we'll see if we can get them there.
Just a quick question, Hallie, what grade are you in and are you the best basketball player in your grade?
I'm in fourth grade and I don't know.
I bet, I'm going to say yes, nobody else has won that award.
What elementary school do you go to?
I go to homeschool.
Okay, all right, cool.
So Hallie, uh, I had the opportunity to coach with Hallie's mom and dad this year on her junior jazz basketball team. And Hallie, Hallie's got a lot of natural talent, but she works super hard. Will you tell us a little bit about, what do you do, like, what did you do to get so good at basketball? What, what do you do?
I just practice.
That's all, huh?
How often do you practice?
Almost every day.
For how long?
Every year.
Ten minutes every day, five minutes every day, how long?
Eighteen to thirty minutes.
Every day, good for you.
Do you have a basketball hoop at your house?
Yes.
But sometimes do you dribble the basketball inside the house as well as outside the house? Cause days like today it snows.
Yes.
So sometimes you dribble inside? Do you know, uh, we had some guests over to our house last year and Jagger, he's not as old as you, Jagger's eight, he's not eleven yet, but he likes to dribble the basketball inside the house, especially on cold days. And this guest said, I've got a perfect gift for you, I'll be right back. They went to their house and they brought over a basketball that doesn't make sound when you dribble it. Uh, because they couldn't get over the sound. Do you have a, do you have a quiet ball inside house or it's the same, same one?
I don't have a quiet ball.
Okay, all right. Very good. I'll bet it's a good sound for your parents to hear you dribbling inside the house, yeah. Sampson, you like to play ball too? All right, all right.
You got anything you want to say, Sampson?
What grade are you in?
Fourth.
Fourth too?
Are you twins? Wow, that's awesome.
Very cool, good.
You guys are sharp.
Yeah. Well, congratulations, that's awesome that you have represented Spanish Fork so well up at the big court at the Delta Center. We expect it next year as well. Uh, that's just how it goes when you win stuff, we always tell people, kids when they come here and win stuff and they get to report to the council, we'll see you next year too, we hope that's the case for you or Sampson or both of you again next year, but thank you so much for representing your city up there. We'd love it if you'd, if you'd go around and shake everybody's hand and then Jack will have you stand right in front of us and take a picture and we'll send that picture to you and, and make sure you're recognized as Spanish Fork's best basketball player this year, for sure.
Okay.
All right, congratulations, Hallie.
All right, I'll take a couple. Perfect, thanks guys.
Thank you, mom and dad, appreciate it, good work, thank you.
So Mayor, real quick, I asked Sampson while I was up if he competed as well, he said that he did. Asked him how he did, he said he came in second. So, pretty good basketball family right there, so great job you guys.
Huge public speakers too, like, I would have lost, so I didn't have to do that.
Yeah, that's pretty, pretty sharp, pretty sharp kids, thank you mom and dad, appreciate you guys coming, thanks so much. Thanks for raising good kids. Okay, our next recognition in council meeting tonight, Mr. Tyler Jacobson's going to introduce her.
Uh, we are grateful to be able to recognize one of the exceptional employees that work here at Spanish Fork City, uh, in Wesley Woodhouse. Uh, Wesley works for our GIS, uh, division and Travis has some pretty astounding things to share about Wesley. Uh, some things that are pretty much, he's one of maybe the only people in the world that understand how to use a specific, uh, program so well. So anyways, with that, Travis will introduce our employee of the quarter.
Okay, so it's, uh, my privilege to get to introduce Wesley Woodhouse, uh, to you guys at council here. Um, oftentimes these guys, you know, Wes and our other GIS specialists, they sit behind the computer and they, they do so much work for everybody behind the scenes, providing tools, providing analytics, a lot of different stuff for everybody to use in the city. Um, Wes has been working hard on our power system, working with our power department to get that mapped, to build a fully connected network model, auditing our meters, um, finding meters that are not in our, haven't been in our system, things like that. He's using a new software that, like, like Tyler was kind of saying, that there's very few people that have been able to actually figure this out. It's a newer software and Wes is one of the few people, I would say in the world, that really has a grasp on how to use it the right way and to, and he's continuing to build it. Um, we're partnering with some other consultants to help us ver- do some verification work and Wes is heading that up. So Wes is a great asset to the city, he's, he's an amazing employee, amazing person. He's married, he has, he has a cute little daughter and, uh, we're, we're really lucky to have him here and, uh, the skillset that he brings us is, is a true asset to the city, so.
Travis? Wes, anything you'd like to say for yourself?
Uh, nothing in particular, um, it's been a lot of work, a lot of hours and a lot of staring at spreadsheets for a month on end.
Kevin loves that type of stuff.
It's like a perfect job, I love numbers.
How long you been, uh, with the city?
Four years now, four years, full-time.
Awesome, okay. Oh, great. Intern, turned into employee of the quarter.
Yep.
That's cool. Any other questions for Wes?
Great job.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Wes, appreciate you being here at Spanish Fork and a, a well-deserved recognition. So if you'd like to shake hands and then get a picture up here too and thanks to your, your spouse and your, your, your baby for supporting you as well and your, your work, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Thanks, Wes.
Good way to always start a meeting. Have some, some recognitions of great people. We appreciate, uh, appreciate that. Takes us to, uh, the public comments section of our agenda tonight. Uh, this is the, uh, the section of the meeting where anybody from the public that would like to come up and, uh, and address the mayor and council or ask any questions, doesn't have to be a, an, a topic on the agenda, but, uh, Jack's got the three-minute timer up. If you could try to keep it to three minutes, that'd be great. But anybody that would like to address the mayor and council in public comments tonight, please come up and give Tara your, your name.
James Burkey. So I'm sure you've all enjoyed the, uh, the lovely snow coming in just barely, you know, on today, April Fools. What a joke. Uh, speaking of, I saw the, uh, the video that was posted on the social media. That was, that was pretty good. I liked that one. It's, uh, it's pretty funny. But instead of, you know, just, just kind of, you know, making jokes and, you know, about controlling the weather and all that, something that we can control to try to, you know, make sure that the weather lines up more accurately with the calendar is the calendar itself. I think if we can, uh, push some of the months on the calendar back by, you know, maybe one month or two, whatever it needs to be, we can make sure that we're actually getting these snowfalls during December when, you know, we're expecting it. So that way our Festival of Lights will actually have the nice stark white background that we're, we're expecting for it. Uh, this can be done in a number of ways. Uh, one being we just add a new month to the calendar maybe. Maybe we call it like double timber or something. Or personally, the option that I'm more in favor of is double a month. Instead, we, uh, we add like a second July, so we can have two Fourth of Julys. Or maybe add another October, so we can have two Halloweens and properly reward the, uh, the Goth woman of this nation, the, uh, the accolades that they deserve. Because it takes a lot of effort to do that whole makeup and dress thing and I, I think they deserve that. So if the city council could, I don't know, talk to your higher-ups or whoever else would, uh, you could think to talk to about that, that'd be a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Appreciate that. Anyone else?
I did.
Okay. Thank you. That, uh, takes us out of public comments section. We'll now go to council comments. We'll start on, on this end with, uh, Councilman Took and work this way to Councilman Marshall for council comments. Councilman Took. Good to be with you, Mayor. Um, good to see so many familiar faces here tonight. Thank you for being with us. We sure appreciate it and having you here with us. Uh, I have three items this evening. The first though is to give some time to our president of the Chamber of Commerce, Kathleen Levitt.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Took. Uh, just a few announcements for you all this evening. Um, Quick Quack Car Wash is opening and cutting their ribbon on April 15th at 4:00 PM. They're located on 44 West Summit Drive. Then we have Gordon Ace Hardware. They are under new ownership and they have redone the whole store. So we're really excited to be cutting their ribbon on April 17th at noon. Then we've got the Easter egg hunt on April 19th at the Spanish Fork Sports Park. That does start at 9:00 AM and it's over really quickly. So anybody watching or anyone sharing news with each other, please make sure to arrive early. So that way you can find parking and get to your age-appropriate field with enough time prior to nine. We will have some entertainment on the field for kids to hopefully stay entertained while they're waiting for the alarm to go off at nine o'clock to start hunting. Um, but it will be over by 9:05. So get there early, please. Um, our area guide magazine is underway. Work is moving forward on that project. It should be ready to mail within a couple of weeks is our plan. So keep an eye on your mailboxes for that beautiful magazine. Um, just to note, we're not going to be hosting a new networking, uh, meeting this month because the Gordon Ace Hardware, um, is cutting their ribbon on the day of our normal cadence for meeting. Um, and they've been planning that for a very long time. So we're going to bring everyone down to celebrate them instead. We are working on a marketing workshop series that we're hoping to kick off this month. So maybe by next council, I'll have some dates for you on that. Um, then just going into May real quickly because we have some new events in May. Our Women in Business event went really well this past month and we've got tons of requests for another one. So we've put together a Women in Business Mental Health Night, supported by Sandstone Psychology. That will be on May 7th at Amavi Event Venue at 6:30 PM. That will be a dinner for women in business. Um, then we'll have our Rotary Chamber Golf Tournament on May 14th at the Oaks Golf Course. And we're doing a Business After Hours Networking Event, um, at Doug Smith Auto on May 21st. And that'll be after hours from four to six PM. So that's what we've got going on at the chamber. Thanks.
Thanks, Kathleen.
Well, thank you, Kathleen. So many great things happening with our Chamber of Commerce. So it's good to get an update. Uh, just two more items for me this evening. I, I was able to attend something really special this past week. Uh, Councilwoman Beck was there as well. It was Park Elementary's, uh, Leadership Day Celebration. So just up Center Street here, Park Elementary School. Uh, first time I've been able to be involved in something like this, but it's, it was so fun. All the students learn about their, um, their, the seven habits of highly effective people. And they picked their favorite habit and they, they do different things throughout the day to present on that and they do panels and show their talents. And, and it was just a lot of fun to just participate with them and to be involved with something so, so important for, for that school and for those kids. And I just, I just loved it, uh, celebrating, uh, leadership with them. And then the last thing is, uh, I recently was able to, uh, be a guest speaker at Diamond Fork Middle School here in town for, uh, Eric Evans Utah Studies class. I know, again, Councilwoman, or yeah, Beck and, uh, the mayor were also there at different times, I believe. But it was so fun to, uh, spend some time talking with these kids, these seventh graders. And I always ask every year, uh, at the end, you know, what would you like to change about Spanish Fork? What would you like to do different or add or et cetera? And their top three things that they like to see come to Spanish Fork this year, I thought were pretty interesting. They said they really would like a better skate park and I thought that was a good one. Uh, also they, they'd like a shopping mall down here in Spanish Fork. Uh, and then the last one that was unanimous, I thought it was kind of funny, is they, they, they said we, we have to find a way to get a Raising Cane's Chicken joint, another chicken joint. So for what it's worth, that's what the seventh graders are, are talking about these days and what they'd like to see here in town. And yeah, just all good things for me. And that's all I've got this evening, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you.
They didn't want a car wash? I was going to say, did they want a car wash?
Not this year. Not for that. Maybe next year. Councilman Carden?
Yeah. Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, first, Jack, have we had any applicants for our weather coordinator position that we opened up today?
Yeah, we've had a few. Actually, the KSL weatherman is interested.
There we go. There we go. Uh, thanks for posting that. That was awesome. Um, this last couple of weeks, um, a few of us were able to attend a power conference down in St. George, um, with UMPA where we get our power as a municipality and with a few other cities. Um, there is a lot changing in the power front, um, as with coal and with other things coming online, uh, potential of nuclear out there in the world. Um, just a lot of things happening. Um, it was a great conference and it was good to attend that. Um, the other thing that I just wanted to mention real quick is, um, I know that we'll be talking about, um, some people in the Rotary Club here in a minute, but one of the areas I get to serve on is in the Rotary. Um, and they meet every first and third Tuesday of the month at Macy's at noon. So if you're looking for a way to serve, it's another good group that you can get out and serve and they are getting ready to do their golf tournament with the chamber. Um, so there is still spots available if you're interested in that. All the proceeds go to scholarships to those in the Neebo School District. So it's a really good opportunity to give back to our community in a, in a really good way. And also for those that, um, are looking for an excuse to golf, Mayor. I've heard that that may be you, um, that you can do that as well. So, um, that's all I got today, Mayor.
Perfect. Thank you, Councilman Carden. Councilman Euler?
Thank you, Mayor. Going to start my comments with, uh, something that took place down at the Senior Center. Jack, if you've got that photo that I shared, each year the Senior Center, down at the Senior Center, they recognize one of our seniors as the Senior Citizen of the Year. And this year, Jan Carlyle was recognized as being our Senior Citizen of the Year. And anybody that knows Jan knows that she is absolutely well-deserving of this recognition and this award. Jan has served on our Senior Center Committee for, uh, on the board for quite a few years now. She's from the South, so she's got an amazing Southern accent. One of the things that they look at when determining who would be a good person for Senior Citizen of the Year is someone that really is involved down at the Senior Center, um, socializes, gets to know new members that come in, has kind of a volunteer heart and mindset. And Jan, Jan checks all the boxes. She's always, always helping, always volunteering. She's got, just on a side note, some of the best handwriting and calligraphy, uh, I have ever seen from a person. So amazing talent that she has. But just wanted to recognize Jan and congratulate her for being our Senior Citizen of the Year. Um, this last, these last few weeks have been busy. Jesse mentioned we had one conference for our power, uh, two other conferences that I've been to in the last couple of weeks. We had our Parks and Rec Conference. And then another big one that we have is, is our Water Users Policy and Water Law Conference that we, that I went to in the last couple of weeks. Some of the things, highlights that we discussed there, they had the commissioner of the Great Salt Lake come and, and give us an update on water levels and the condition of the Great Salt Lake. Talked about just water in general. A lot of times people, people question, wonder what, what's the water use like in, in Spanish Fork? How much growth can we handle with our water? Uh, those things were addressed and discussed. We had the Mountain Neebo Water Agency discuss groundwater levels and our groundwater management plan where we analyze and look at the wells throughout South Utah County to determine and see if Mona pulls too much water out of their wells. How does it affect the people in Santaquin? Or how does it affect people in, in Salem? We had individuals from Central Utah Water come and talk about how they're working with the High Line Canal Company to pipe the High Line Canal in the near future and make it easier to get water to our neighbors in the South. And so water is always a big concern. When we see snow like we got today, let's, let's be grateful that it's snowing and maybe a little less, little less grumbly. I know it's easy to want spring to come quick, but we're fortunate that we've got the water level, the water pack that we do this year. I know down in the South, St. George and those areas are, I think, last chart I saw today was they're at 40% of average. So they're, they're still in drought and they're struggling. One thing that they emphasized at this conference is when it comes to Utah, we're at three stages when it comes to water. We're either in drought, coming out of drought, or going back into drought. So those are, those are our three options. So it's always good to look for ways to conserve and better use the water that we have. Uh, final thing, one final message being on the animal shelter board as well. As the weather does begin to turn war, turn warm, uh, we have a tendency as pet owners to maybe allow our pets to roam a little more free. If you have a pet and you take your pet or your dog for walks on the River Trail, I would just invite you as residents of our community to be good stewards of your, your animals. Take a bag along with you so that you're not, uh, leaving something for someone else to clean up. And also, if you are allowing your dogs and your cats to free-range the, the community, as Bob Barker once said, um, be a responsible pet owner and please have your pets spayed and neutered. Thank you. That's all I've got, Mayor.
I never get told.
No, I like, and he's getting better at it too. He sounded more like Bob Barker. I love it. Thank you, Councilman Euler. Councilwoman Beck?
I want to start off by reading something in the city's municipal, municipal code. Our Planning Commission, the purpose. The Planning Commission is created to provide analysis and recommendations to the council related to the city's general plan, zoning ordinance, subdivisions, and capital facilities plans. Now, there's several other things that also are in there, but we want to specifically thank John Mendenhall today and Joseph Ernest. Joseph was not able to be here, but John, can you come on up here? We collectively, this is a thank you from all of us, just want to thank you for the many, many years of service in this capacity, the countless hours and the wealth of wisdom and knowledge. We appreciate the role you guys play. It helps us, like, I don't think we can even say, but for you guys to vet the things like you do, by the time it comes to us, things are really ready to go. So John, how many years was it? Six?
Yeah, just over six.
Okay.
John, what's the latest meeting that you've, that you attended? What time was the, uh, latest one that you got out of?
The latest?
The latest.
Uh, it was nearly one o'clock. It was during COVID down at the, uh, down at the fairgrounds.
And what time did that meeting start?
Six o'clock. And we had more, more than one meeting after midnight. But you know, that was, it's a great opportunity to let people speak and to get the feedback of what they're thinking. And it's important that we pay attention to that kind of stuff because we need to have the input from everybody. Uh, and those things don't happen very often. It's happened here in city council meeting as well. So, uh, I think you were serving on that, uh, on the commission at that time.
It was a fun one.
Yeah, it was a long one. So when you start having more than one, uh, bathroom break and a meeting, you know it's been a long time.
Well, John, it, it doesn't go without us just saying thank you. Please know that we are grateful for your years of service. We, we think you really enjoyed it. It was a lot of service. It wa, it's not something you get paid to do, but you were really good at it. And as a token of our appreciation, we want to give you a certificate and a little bit of Spanish Fork City swag.
Wow, thank you.
We'll get Joseph his a little bit later.
Okay, thank you.
Mike was saying your hair was darker six years ago when you started this. Is that true?
Actually, this hair started about the time that he hit about thirteen.
I would believe that. That I believe. Thank you, John.
John, John was great to serve with on the commission. Had the opportunity to sit next to him for many years. And when you say wealth of wisdom, you're not kidding. He, he has a history of Spanish Fork that many people would, would love to have. Um, one of my highlights serving with John, and I'm not going to repeat what was said, but it was the 7/11, uh, process that we went through there and just great sense of humor as well. So thank you, John, for all of you, all that you've done.
Dave, uh, made a comment that, uh, he keeps a notebook and likes to keep track of funny or dumb things that have been said in, in meetings. He says he's got a top 10 and at one time I owned about seven of those. Most of them were dumb things and that was probably a dumb thing to say. But, you know, it's great to have two councilmen who served as commissioners too, you know? It's a great place to start your service and, uh, it, uh, I told, uh, Mayor Steve Leifson was the one who asked me to serve on the commission. And I told him that he was lucky that my mother taught me not to turn down church callings or service callings. And, uh, hey, it was a great ride. It's been really fun to get to know people in the city, uh, not just city councilmen and staff, but people who, you know, re, react to what we do. And we do the best we can, you know? It, it's not easy because in the meetings, there's going to be half of them that love you and half of them hate you. So, uh, but it's been a great experience. And I thank the city council for putting, you know, a lot of trust in the, uh, Planning Commission. It, it is a, a, a great opportunity to learn. So, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
Yes?
Are we sure we want to give one to Joseph? He did move to a
I know.
Town then.
His inferior.
Wow.
We'll scratch his.
Yeah. Does anyone want some swag? No, I talked to him today. He's on, um, spring break with his family and I expend, I extended our appreciation to him. Um, several councilmen talked about UMPA conferences, um, Diamond Fork Junior High, part, the Leader in Me Program that we've been busy doing. A couple of other things that I just wanted to share. Whatever picture you have first, Jack? This is last Thursday at the Tabitha's Way ribbon cutting for their new building. I see several of you that are here were also at this ribbon cutting. I think there were about a hundred and fifty people there, right Kevin?
It was full.
It was one of the bigger ribbon cuttings that I've ever been to. We had Deidra Henderson, our lieutenant governor there, speaking. It was just really cool to see Wendy Osborne just live her dreams and have such a vision that started fifteen years ago in a really, really small building on Main Street. I believe this is now her fourth location in Spanish Fork. They also have a location in American Fork and a satellite location in Saratoga Springs. I went to lunch with her last week and I'm like, so are you, are you done? Have you reached your, you know, the top of your mountain? She's like, no, now I'm thinking of expanding here and doing this. I'm like, wow. Her and her team are just amazing. She's here in our council chambers regularly and, and working with just serve who we'll hear from soon, but just congratulations to Wendy Osborne and, and her great team there at Tabitha's Way that are helping so many people in need in our community. And then the other thing I went and did last Friday night was I took my two grandkids to Mary Poppins and the Drama Dons outdid themselves. They have a new, I guess it's a police system, like Bert was able to walk up the side of the wall, walk across the ceiling and walk back down. And then Mary flew in on act one, flew out after act one and then came back in. Like, it was so great. And so if you ever have the chance to go support our, our theater here in Spanish Fork at the high school, the auditorium is just incredible and the acting level is really fantastic. So, good job Drama Dons. And that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you, Councilwoman Beck. Councilman Marshall.
Why do you deep sigh when you say that?
Well, when I get to you.
Shane, um, just one thing, the Solidways District Board met last Wednesday. They passed their tentative twenty, FY twenty-six budget. There'll be a public hearing May twenty-eighth, so a couple of months now that we'll formally pass that budget. Slight increase in the landfill charges, mostly because, well, in transportation charges, mostly because where we take our garbage to the landfill, that went up by thirty percent this last year. So those, those, that increase gets passed along to the transportation, gets passed along to the consumer. So slight increase, but yeah, it's all passed. If you want to come and express your opinion about the budget, come on May twenty-eighth down at the transfer station at five o'clock.
Will that increase our residents by thirty percent?
No, not quite. It's, it's almost ten percent.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks, Shane.
Yep, that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Marshall. I'll, I'll try to get through this pretty quick because you'll do the state of the city in, in just a bit here, but thank you, Councilwoman Beck for, she kind of talked about honoring our commissioners. Commissioner Davis is, is here too. He was a councilman and then a commissioner after. And we appreciate the planning commission in, in, in all that they, they do. Councilman, or yeah, Councilman Marshall said something to me when he saw that, that we were gonna, gonna honor dad tonight and said, that's weird, you're signing your dad's certificate, you know? And I said, well, it's a small enough town still that your dad can be commissioner and your political opponent can be your wife's cousin. So we're still small enough that, that, you know, that you run into each other. So, right? That's what you said.
That's, I said all those words.
Um, Councilman Took, mentioned that, that the seventh graders up, up there at Diamond Fork, I got to, to be, present to Monroe's class and try not to embarrass her too much, but they had great questions. Seventh graders in, in that school, good job, Mr. Chandler and Mr. Evans in teaching your, your, your students well, and, and they asked great questions. The fourth graders also at Reese Elementary, principal goal allowed me to come up there and, and speak to those kids and take some of their questions. Some fantastic questions there, the fourth graders at Reese Elementary, pretty, pretty smart cookies. Had an opportunity to attend the Kiwanis last week with Commissioner Gordon, formerly Councilman Gordon. And, and again, I know we've, we've, we've all thought of the, the family there in, in losing such a, a good Kiwanian. And you could fill that, that in, in the, the meeting as well. And, and so good people just still coming together in all of our service clubs. Got to attend that same week, the Utah State Junior Livestock Show fundraiser. Once again, the Utah State Junior Livestock Show is the end of this month and gonna happen. I can't remember Tyler, how many thousands of dollars raised, or it sounded like over twenty thousand dollars raised? Twenty-two thousand dollars they raise at this stock show dinner and they give it all away to scholarships of kids that want to pursue the ag arena. And so they're gonna give the, that money away. And so if you, if you don't think agriculture is at the heart of our community still, the Utah State Junior Livestock Show is sure doing it and making sure the next generation continues on those traditions. So that was fun to be at. Appreciate the invitation from them. And lastly, got to attend, I sent Jack a couple of pictures of, we didn't start out like that, but Jagger and Avery and our good friend Cheru and, and also Avery's cousin there, Kurt Gordon, always plays at the Color Fest. If anybody didn't know what happened over the weekend, Saturday and Sunday, well over ten thousand people for two days attended what they call their largest color festival in, in, in their, their type of religion. And so it's, it's pretty cool that they invited me to come down and, and start one of the color throws. Cheru said it was the first time that an elected official's come down since County Commissioner Herbert started it a while ago. I know the LDS Church was, was there one day representing and, and it's just a good time. He's, Cheru and Vi have been here reminding us what they do and what they're about, but it, it stuck out to me down there again that he reminded and said, hey, you have a lot of great things that bring people down to South Utah County and Spanish Fork. And he said, what we're proud of with this event is that the, the three things that usually draw a crowd are either have substances like alcohol, something to draw them, violence, some sort of violent thing happening that people want to see, or partisanship. And that, that way you get thousands and thousands of people. He says, notice Mayor, we don't have any of that here. None of that's happening here. It's just a, a time to celebrate renewal and spring. And it sure seemed like a lot of people were doing that, celebrating, having a good time and hitting each other in the face with chalk or cornstarch that was different colors. So it does not come out very good on white stuff. So it's, some of that stuff's no longer usable, but appreciate their invitation and their hospitality. Appreciate our neighbors, Salem, it, and Utah County. It is, it's a feat to get that many people in an area like that. And so we appreciate all of us working together in partnership to, to have that event happen for them. It's, it's super important to them. So, very good stuff. Okay, that's all I have. Any other things come to mind, council, that you want to touch on in council comments before we go to staff reports? Okay, manager parents, staff reports, anything that we need to follow up on?
Uh, I think maybe just one thing to talk about. Tyler?
Yeah, had an opportunity to attend the Central Utah nine-one-one board meeting a couple of weeks ago, and we talked about the budget that will be, that they're trying to put together. It looks like they're estimating about a, our portion, so there's twenty-six cities and other entities that make up Central Utah nine-one-one for the public. That is dispatch, so when you call nine-one-one, you're connected to, to dispatch. And they're projecting about a thirty-three percent increase to our, our bill. They're gonna continue to refine that. There's some questions we've asked to try to determine what's going into that. Most of that's personnel, personnel costs, so.
Perfect. Okay. Anything else?
I was gonna have Dave, sorry, gonna talk about the general plan, but not tonight.
You wanna, you wanna wait?
No.
Okay. Well, if he gets back, we'll.
Maybe later.
Okay, we can do it later in the agenda. Okay, takes us to Spanish Fork one-on-one. Tonight, the one-on-one's gonna be the state of the city address, and, and then we'll get to, to some important things on our agenda that I know some of you are here for as well. I want to first, before they, they press play on this, just thank Jack, thank Travis, thank Pete, the whole SFCN crew that makes this possible. This is a little bit different scenario than, than last year. If you remember, we gave the state of the city and, and just did it here in front, but we did that the other day and recorded it, so it's a little bit more user friendly to, to get out to the citizens that maybe don't hear this or see this tonight, but maybe can, can see it on their own time. So again, thankful that we have the ability to do that and thankful to those good people who, who worked on this and, and made it a reality tonight. So I think it's about ten minutes long. Is that, is that?
Twelve.
Okay, all right. And so if, if you'd.
It might be the shortest speech ever.
Could be. It could be the shortest one ever. You're right.
Is this one take or?
This is one take, Shane. We started from the beginning. Yep, they, they spliced in some work, but yes, I didn't miss a beat. One year ago, I addressed residents to celebrate the city's successes, speak about the challenges we were then facing, and share how we're working to make Spanish Fork an even better place to live. A lot has happened since then, and now I'm excited to give an update on the city's progress. A few weeks ago, I posted a video on social media asking for questions and topics to address, and as always, you didn't hold back. I appreciate everyone who took the time to send in their thoughts and very direct opinions. Some questions were expected, others were a little more unique, but all of them gave insight into the concerns you have and how much you care about this community. One of the most important responsibilities we have as a city is public safety. And over the past year, our police and fire and EMS teams have been busier than ever. In two thousand twenty-four, our police department responded to a record twenty-eight thousand three hundred and fifty-five calls for service, a thirteen percent increase from the previous year. That's a big number, and it reflects just how much our officers are out in the community, helping more people, responding to more incidents, and working proactively to keep our city safe. Even with this increased demand, arrest rates and crimes against persons have not risen at the same rate. That means our officers aren't just reacting to crime, they're helping prevent it through traffic safety, community engagement, and de-escalation tactics. We're grateful for every single officer who serves today, those who have been here for decades and those who have just joined the force. Whether they're patrolling our streets, responding to emergencies, or working behind the scenes, they all play a vital role in keeping Spanish Fork safe, and we thank them for it. But public safety goes beyond law enforcement. It also means making sure that when there's a fire, medical emergency, or any other crisis, help is on the way. The city council, staff, and I have discussed the growing demands on our fire and EMS department and the need to ensure we can keep pace with increasing emergency calls. We have taken action. We made a major investment in public safety by transitioning to a full-time, professional fire and EMS department, ensuring that when you call, help arrives quickly and reliably. Last year, our crews were on a call seventy percent of the time. Nearly one quarter of the time, they were handling multiple emergencies at once. And on three hundred and seventy-two occasions, our teams were stretched across three, four, or even five calls simultaneously. These numbers make one thing clear. This investment was necessary and it's working. Our commitment to public safety is stronger than ever. We've made real progress in ensuring that our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics have the resources, training, and support that they need, but we're not stopping here. We will continue to invest in safety to ensure that every resident, every business, and every visitor is protected, because at the end of the day, nothing matters more than the safety of the people who call Spanish Fork home. Now, I know everyone has opinions about city growth and development. Some of you are excited to see new businesses and opportunities come to town, others wish we could build a big wall around Spanish Fork, post a no vacancy sign, and just keep things exactly as they are. And I get it, we all love this community for what it is. We hear this tension all the time. We don't want Spanish Fork to grow, and often in the very next breath, but I want my kids to be able to afford to live here someday. And that's the challenge. We want to keep the close-knit, small-town feel that makes Spanish Fork special, but we also want to make sure that our kids and grandkids have a place here too. We want more local restaurants and stores, but we don't want too much traffic. We want bigger parks, but we don't want too much development. We want Spanish Fork to stay the same and grow at the same time. That's why in two thousand twenty-four, we launched a comprehensive general plan update, because growth is happening, whether we like it or not, and our job is to make sure it happens in the right way. By two thousand fifty, Spanish Fork will need over thirteen thousand six hundred additional residential units to meet demand. Meanwhile, the amount of available land within our current boundaries is limited. That means we have to be thoughtful about where and how we grow. So, we asked you, our residents, what matters most, and you gave us clear answers. You love Spanish Fork's small-town feel and want to preserve its character. You support higher-density housing, but only in the right places, like Main Street, the future frontrunner station, and North Gateway, where growth can happen without disrupting existing neighborhoods. You want to protect open spaces and the river bottoms, ensuring that development doesn't come at the cost of Spanish Fork's natural beauty. You want smart investments in roads, parks, trails, and public spaces to keep our quality of life high as the city grows. That's exactly what we're working towards, growth that makes sense and preserves what makes Spanish Fork, Spanish Fork, while allowing us to welcome new residents, businesses, and opportunities. Through smart planning and continued investment, we will ensure that this city remains a great place to live, work, and raise a family for all of us and for generations to come. Spanish Fork is not just growing, it's growing in the right way. Last month, a friend gave me an old book called Ordinances of Spanish Fork City, nineteen thirty-one. I expected to find some quirky old rules, maybe something about proper horse parking etiquette, or a fine for hitching your wagon too close to the general store. What really caught my eye was a section referring to the congested area of town around Main Street. So yeah, people have been complaining about traffic here for over a century. Back then, congestion probably meant too many buggies lined up at the feed store, but the core issue remains the same. How do we keep people moving efficiently through our city? In recent years, we've removed unnecessary stop signs, improved intersections, and created alternative north-south routes beyond just Main Street and Highway six. Those efforts have helped ease congestion, but we know there's more to do. And let's be honest, changing anything about traffic in this town is guaranteed to get some opinions. Add a stop sign, people don't like it. Take one away, people don't like it. Change a lane, people don't like it. The fact that we have strong feelings about traffic proves we care about getting to our destination quickly and safely. So the goal is simple, better flow, fewer backups, and a transportation system that works for the city we are now and the city we're becoming. One of the biggest projects ahead is the redesign of Main Street from one thousand north to three hundred south. Right now, Main Street has a higher-than-average crash rate, and its pavement and underground utilities have reached the end of their service life. It's time for an update. That's why Spanish Fork City and UDOT are working together on a comprehensive redesign to improve safety, upgrade aging infrastructure, and create a better flow of traffic. The updated design will include a smoother, safer road surface to improve drivability, improved pedestrian areas, signage, and landscaping to make Main Street safer and more inviting for businesses and visitors, and better turning lane configurations to reduce bottlenecks and keep traffic flowing efficiently. The project is still in the design phase, and an open house was held in early two thousand twenty-five for residents and business owners to provide input. Phase one construction is expected to begin in two thousand twenty-eight. Growth means more people, and more people means more cars on the road. That's why we will continue investing in projects that will improve mobility, reduce congestion, and ensure that getting around Spanish Fork is as safe and efficient as possible. Will traffic ever be perfect? Probably not, but can we make it better? Absolutely. A hundred years from now, someone might open a book on Spanish Fork history and read about the traffic challenges we faced. But instead of seeing the same old complaints, I hope they see something different, a city that just didn't sit back and accept the problem, but worked to find real solutions. This year, we're opening one of the most exciting and transformative projects in Spanish Fork's history, the Fit City Center. Construction is moving along, and we're on track to open this November. Just last month, we unveiled the Fit City Center name, brand, and logo, and the excitement has only been growing since. As we approach opening, we're making key decisions on pricing, staffing, and programming to ensure that when the doors open, we're ready to deliver a top-notch experience. We're close to making our first hires, a major step in bringing this facility to life. And if you're wondering just how close And if you're wondering just how closely I've been following the progress, just ask my wife Amber. Most people turn on the TV for the big game, the latest episode of their favorite show, or Saturday Night Live, but at our house, it's locked on Channel 16, watching live construction of the rec center. At this point, I think she's accepted that this is just our entertainment now. But jokes aside, this is one of the most exciting projects we've taken on as a city. Years from now, we will look back and be so glad we made this investment, because the Fit City Center is about more than just physical exercise. It's about providing a space where everyone can gather to connect, improve their emotional well-being, and enjoy a healthier lifestyle. This rec center is going to be a centerpiece for our community, a place for families, athletes, seniors, and anyone who wants to stay active and engaged. A place where kids will learn to swim, teams will compete, and neighbors will gather. But our commitment to wellness doesn't stop with the rec center. We believe that every resident in Spanish Fork should have access to a park within a 10-minute walk of their home. Whether it's a quiet green space, a playground, a walking trail, or a ball field, everyone deserves a place to be outside, to breathe fresh air, and enjoy this beautiful city. That's why we are committed to expanding parks, trails, and outdoor spaces that promote health, recreation, and community connection. Because at the end of the day, investing in recreation, parks, and open spaces will help keep our community strong, connected, and thriving for generations to come. Together, we've covered public safety, city growth, traffic, recreation, and the investments we're making to ensure our city thrives. Each of these endeavors present challenges, but they also present exciting opportunities to find solutions. Because we all know this city has never been one to shy away from a challenge. Time and time again, we have made wise, forward-thinking decisions. We've been willing to innovate and embrace progress while holding on to the values that make Spanish Fork special. We will continue making strategic investments in public safety, infrastructure, and recreation to ensure Spanish Fork remains a safe, vibrant, and connected community. We will stay committed to smart growth, and we will preserve the small-town character we love for our future residents of this great city. And we will always strive to build and maintain the quality of life for our residents. Because when we invest in parks, roads, and essential services, we are investing in what makes this city great: Its people. There will always be challenges, but we are prepared and ready to tackle them, just like we always have. I'm happy to report that the state of our city is strong. Thank you for taking the time to view this presentation. Thank you for caring about this city, and most of all, thank you for making Spanish Fork the home of pride and progress. Thanks. Thanks for for sticking around for for that presentation. Again, we hope it's something that if you want to know what happened last year in Spanish Fork and what's coming up for the the upcoming year, check in on that. And like you've already heard from the the council today, they cover many different departments of this city, departments that that they have to go to meetings every single week, every other week, and and discuss a bunch of those items that were were touched on in the state of the city. So please, if you have any questions from what you heard there, concerns or anything, reach out, reach out to your your council people, reach out to myself, and and we're happy to to work with you. But again, I can't thank SFCN enough. I can't thank the the whole staff of of Spanish Fork City. You do have over 300 strong that that work here every single day to make this this place such an awesome, an awesome place to live. And so grateful for all of them, and and we all should be as citizens. So so thank you. Thank you. Feel free to to reach out. Takes us, any questions, council, before we move on from that? Yes, it was one take. Shane.
Well done.
That was amazing. Great job.
Thank you. We'll go to item eight, a couple of consent items before we get to to new business, which I know some some people are here for. If there's any questions for the consent items, I'd entertain that, and if there's no questions, I'd entertain a motion. I move to approve the consent items.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Took, seconded by Councilwoman Beck. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Consent items are approved. Shane, now you're in the clear that one guy that just left the building is a former FBI agent, so you're you're probably fine.
He's waiting for me out there?
He's probably waiting for you, yeah. Well.
I thought I was gonna fly under the radar.
Yep. Okay, takes us to item nine, the section of new business. Excited for for one of these at least, the Just Serve proclamation. Would like to invite Richard and Tamara Davis up here to speak more to this. I don't know, Seth, if if you want to talk a little bit about this before they do, but you were.
Yeah, I think I think letting them go, probably Tamara, not Richard, but I think letting them go would be great.
There you go. There you go.
I want to tell you, I'm very emotional right now. Mayor, that was awesome, and I am so proud of all of you for your leadership, but also for your service, for staff. You're the best. Thank you for your integrity, your honesty, and your love for this wonderful city. I've lived here all my life, except for a few years up at Utah State University. But I'm so very proud of all of you for what you have accomplished just in the last few years and the wonderful things that are happening in our city. It's very, it's an honor to live here and to grow here and to serve here with all of you. So that is why we're here. I'm Richard and Tamara Davis and Monty Marshall. Monica's here. I don't know your last name. You got it all backwards.
Dan Bro.
Yeah. And she's over communications and stuff like that with the Just Serve. But we are here to present to the city as a Just Serve city. Now, Spanish Fork has always been a Just Serve city. From the moment our pioneers moved into this wonderful city back in 1847, 48, everybody served. They didn't hire contractors to build the bridges or the roads, or the cemeteries, or the forts, you know, or take, you know, take care of of each other. They volunteered to help. I remember as a little boy, growing up and playing baseball, going to the Kiwanis Fields and the J.C. Fields and the Lions Fields. All of them were built by Kiwanis Clubs. The Lions, the Lions Club and the J.C. Fields, all of them. All of them had coaches that volunteered. I can name every one of them as a little boy. I can name all the players on the different teams as we grew up. Same way as as all the coaches from then on. All these wonderful coaches that have volunteered, you know, in all the recreational departments and all of that that have come and served, and now in the communication areas and all the other fishing and everything else, all these volunteers come forward and help make Spanish Fork what it truly is today. It's it's been an honor to grow up here, you know, and now we have so many other things. We mentioned Tabitha's Way. Wendy is unreal. I was the city councilman when she first moved into here, that little 300-square-foot place that she lived there. And I remember walking in for the very first time and seeing her with her little bit of produce, a few clothes hanging on hangers, and I thought, I don't know if this is ever gonna make it. But I can't tell you that I didn't realize that Wendy had a heart of a lion and look what she's done today. And all the wonderful services that she provides each and every day for people. We have so many wonderful people that do that, so why not make Spanish Fork a Just Serve city? All the wonderful aspects that we have, you know, you can, I'd like to turn the time over to Tamara a little bit so she can tell you a little bit on how to get onto the Just Serve network, and every one of us can go and volunteer with our families and our friends or just individually. Anyway, Tamara.
If you're not familiar with Just Serve, it is a website, justserve.org, and an app. And it's a place where nonprofits, faith-based community, and governmental organizations can go on and post some projects that they have that they're in need of volunteers for. And then individuals, families, youth groups, anybody that wants to, can go on and find a project that's suited to their circumstances and abilities and find a place to serve in the city close to home.
Monty, do you have anything you want to say?
I think you're doing great.
There it is.
Yes, and them are some of the things.
I'll say something real quick.
Okay. Come on, Monty.
I would just say, it, I was in the meeting with the mayor and our city manager, and they just shared this vision that was just expressed, and it wasn't hard for them to understand where we were going with this. Service is a unifier. It's good for our city in so many ways, and and it's an opportunity for all walks of life to be able to come together, and that's part of our purpose. Thank you.
Well, I just want to tell one more story. Tamara hates it, but I'm going to tell the story anyway. I'm not so sure why me and Tamara are doing this, why we were called to do this. But I do remember a few years ago, a lot of people coming together up at the Thistle Slide to look for a little missing girl. They were said that that's where she was. Her parents couldn't go down there because they were afraid that if we found any piece of her, that we would be prosecuted for it. So all we could do was just watch hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of volunteers sit through gravel and dirt and rocks, and all they could do was say, "Thank you." Now, how do you pay back a city and people that have done that for your family? You can't. I just, there's no way. But we can try, and we do the best we can to be good people, to be good human beings, and to love people, and try to serve them the best we can. And this is what Spanish Fork has always been. And it is an honor for me and Tamara to present Spanish Fork. Well, I will. I'm gonna let him do it. This certificate giving Spanish Fork as a Just Serve city. And I'm going to now turn the time over to Mayor Mendenhall to read the proclamation as a Just Serve city.
Richard had to had to tell that story right before I'm supposed to read something, so if you'll give me a second. But before I read this, I can't think of of better people than than to carry something like this to our to our city. I know the the council can back me up on this. How many times up here are you asked by people to say, "Well, it feels like you got something really good going on. How can I get involved? What can I do for the city?" And these are residents that some of us have maybe known for our whole lives, and sometimes they're brand-new residents, right? That just say, "It seems like there's a good feeling about Spanish Fork. How can I? How can I serve?" And and so realistically, in a in a way of of what we're becoming here, like like Tamara touched on there, is those opportunities are going to be listed now additionally on on this website and on this app. And so we can point a lot of people to that place and say, "This is where the city needs help, and this is how you can serve your your community right here close to home." So I'm really excited about it. I know the council is too, because we do regularly get asked those those questions. And so we appreciate appreciate all you've done, appreciate your your lifetime of service here, and and it's, I'm proud to to read this and and become a partner in this in this movement. The Spanish Fork City Proclamation: Committing to Volunteerism. Whereas Spanish Fork City firmly believes that the values of compassion, empathy, and community support are the foundation of a united, harmonious society and foster connections that transcend differences. Whereas the strength and prosperity of our cities, towns, and villages are based in the selflessness of their residents to serve and uplift one another. Whereas we acknowledge the profound impact that can be achieved when we extend a helping hand to our neighbors, especially those of diverse backgrounds, lifting them up and collectively working to improve lives. Whereas we nurture a culture of giving within our community, emphasizing that volunteerism is not just a duty but a source of personal fulfillment and community strength. And as we work side by side with and learn from each other, mutual understanding increases, misconceptions can be corrected, and new friendships are built. Whereas Spanish Fork City urges all citizens to care for one another, volunteer, and engage in acts of service and kindness that contribute to our city's betterment and its inhabitants' well-being, regardless of background or belief. Whereas Spanish Fork City has joined a growing list of supporters, including the president of the National League of Cities and hundreds of leaders to date, in making a commitment to volunteerism. Now therefore, I, Mike Mendenhall, mayor of Spanish Fork City, proclaim that Spanish Fork City commits to promoting volunteerism, leveraging justserve.org to make it easier for residents to find and engage in volunteer opportunities, and will regularly acknowledge and celebrate the contributions of volunteers dated April 1, 2025. Mike Mendenhall, mayor of Spanish Fork City. You okay to all stand up here so Jack can get a picture of us? Jack, is that all right? Hold, yeah, hold this down there, Richard, so the picture gets it. Okay, don't go anywhere. Thank you. Thank you. Yep. Seth, you were in, Jesse and I were in Conference for the National League of Cities where we saw the Just Serve organization with a booth. That was pretty neat to see.
That was pretty cool.
Yeah.
A lot of Just Serve cities across the nation, so that's really exciting to see that that already exists. As Richard said, very, as we reviewed a staff, the the requirements, it was an easy thing to do, certainly an easy thing to consider, and won't require a whole lot of change for us, but certainly hopefully provide an opportunity for additional outlets and service projects to happen. So should be, should be a great partnership.
One of those items that we've discussed in in becoming a Just Serve city, as as we now officially are, is to make sure that we recognize, and you've seen, you've seen that already, of recognizing some some cool people in our community, but really focusing on, at least on a quarterly basis, recognizing those that that volunteer and and do that, they just serve in our community. And and so this is fitting that that one of these, one of these citizens tonight that we get to to honor and and honor their their family and and give them a a Just Serve Hero Award tonight. Before I tell you her name, I I want to read off just some of some of her accomplishments, some of of what this woman has meant to to her community, to our community. She was a newspaper columnist and reporter for the Spanish Fork Press. She was a volunteer with the March of Dimes. She was the director of the Spanish Fork Area Chamber of Commerce. I remember, I remember when when she was there. She was a patient advocate for decades and decades at the Canyon View Medical Clinic. In the community, she served as PTA president, PTA council president. In the community, she served as PTA president, PTA council president, the Symphony, the Rotary Club, American Legion Auxiliary, Study Groups, the Chamber of Commerce, the Arts Council of Spanish Fork, Crossing Flags for Main Street, the City Bus Committee. Some of the favorite accomplishments for, for this storied woman is she helped get crossing guards established in our city. What important, what important key for, for serving and, and following up on something that's so important. She served as a crossing guard herself on Center Street. She served on the South County Economic Summit with the Chamber of Commerce, a couple of our Chamber of Commerces that got together to create that summit. It was also said that, that all, all of my kids like me. Maybe that's, maybe that's one of the most important accomplishments when you assess your, your life is that all of your kids like, like you. She was married for nearly 60 years to her husband, Ron. And so it's, it's my esteemed honor and, and privilege tonight to give the first Just Serve Hero Award from Spanish Fork City to Karen Payne in recognition of her outstanding efforts to, to unite her community with hope and goodness through service. If her husband, Ron, and family would like to come up and, and receive this award for Karen, we'd be honored to give it to you. Please give them a round of applause.
Joe, the pitcher?
Yes. We want you to stand at that microphone after you get this, Ron. And we want you to talk to the, the world about your, your sweetheart Karen. Tell us, tell us who's here with you tonight, Ron.
Well, Karen and I have lived in Spanish Fork for 47 years. She passed away last month, but she was filled with service. I remember one time she got a call to substitute teach. She only had two semesters of college, but they knew that she could teach. And so she went in and then turned out the person that she was substituting for had a major illness and he was gone the whole year. And she was there trying to figure out how to teach and come up with their own lesson plans and things of that sort. But she was early in the Chamber of Commerce. She remembers having an office in the basement of the old building. I think it was more of a closet than a, but she was there for some time and finally they moved the chamber up a little higher in the, in the offices. She loved the service there. She, again, loved Rotary. She was a member of Rotary for 30 years. And she was instrumental in getting the, in participating with getting the golf tournament thing where we raised money to provide scholarships, usually about 15 to 17 scholarships every year. She enjoyed that. She enjoyed working at Canyon View Medical because she was a patient advocate. Her job was to go out and greet the, the patients and if it looked like they needed to get in a little sooner, she'd get them in a little sooner. But she would just visit with them and see how things are going and, and she loved the opportunity to, to, to talk with, with patients as they, they came in. She loved that job. Again, we've been here a long time. There weren't any stoplights on Main Street. She saw the need for crossing guards and she got that approved. And she actually was a crossing guard and she would head the flags and get out there and on Center Street and wave people across the road or whatever. So a lot of fun things that she's done. But we're pleased to have her recognized today. She has been a stalwart citizen in Spanish Fork. I say this, thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Appreciate it. Can we get a picture with everybody up here? Anybody else want to, to say something about? Okay, there you go.
Can we move over this way a little bit? Great, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks so much.
Good to see you.
Mayor, I, I remember Karen working in the basement in, in the city office building and she was there when I first started here in 2004. And it was always nice to see her. She was always bright, smiley, kind as she worked there in the chamber. Richard, or Ron, we met, I think it was in the middle of February, as we were talking about this Just Serve and hoping to have, hoping to have tonight, that we could recognize somebody. And as we were talking about it, your wife was immediately one that we wanted to recognize. She was, she was alive at that moment when we were talking about her and, and I think that's maybe special to know that, that, that even, you know, before she passed, that was, that was part of our thoughts of her and, and our recognition of her. And I hope it's okay, I'm a little emotional too. I love what you, what you or your children wrote about her in her, in her obituary, the last line. Karen, in lieu of flowers, Karen would love for you to do something kind for someone else, an act of love that reflects the spirit of generosity that she embodied throughout her life. Perfect. That's the Karen, of course, that I knew and, and got to know from the day I got here 20, almost 21 years ago. So our love, our love to you and your family, certainly at this time as well.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, Ron.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you. This will hang in the, in the mayor's office as a Just Served City and, and I think most people won't be surprised that, that their city is a Just Served City. It'll hang long after I'm, I'm the mayor, done being the mayor. And, and it's an honor that Karen Payne is, is the first recipient of, of a recognition as well. So we appreciate Ron and the Payne family so much. And that'll be a tough one for everybody to, to live up to and, and get that award on the quarterly basis. So again, thank you to the Davis family. Thank you to, to the Just Serve Organization for, for reaching out and, and for getting us to a point where we can be a city like this and, and, and just involve more people in serving in our community. Beautiful thing, so we appreciate it. Okay, anything else, council, on that front? Okay, all right. Well, we thank everybody for, for joining our, our first part of the meeting. We, we don't have too much left, but the rest is kind of business of, of, of the community. So you're more than welcome to stay, would love to have you to stay, but most are going to get a bite to eat, it looks like, so I don't, I don't blame you. Does anybody need a, a break for a minute before we move on to the rest of it? Just wait a minute until...
Thanks for joining us.
Item B on our agenda of new business is approving some personnel policy changes. Mr. Tyler Jacobson, I assume, is speaking to this.
Thank you, Mayor. A lot goes into these personnel policy updates. It's not just like we go in and decide one day that we want to change these policies. We start off by having some discussion amongst ourselves and administration if, if there's a request for an update. And then we have, we do some research, research what are other cities doing, what are other entities doing. We meet with the Personnel Committee to get a fill of what their, what those that sit on the, the committee's departments fill and, and also we have a couple of our council members that are part of that Personnel Committee. And so these are things that we really take seriously and put a lot of thought and time into making sure that, that they're sound. So what we're proposing tonight, there's a couple of main policies that I wanted to address here. One of them is new. We, in our current personnel policy, and for, for quite some time, we've had funeral leave. So if you have, if there's an employee that has a member of their family pass away, then they receive up to three days of funeral leave that's paid. We did some research and looked into postpartum recovery and parental leave to see what other entities were doing and, and to try to see what we could do to help our employees that are having, having children and, and did a lot of research and, and came up with the policy that's before you tonight. Some of the highlights of that, this would be a new policy that would allow some paid leave time for postpartum recovery for mothers that have given birth, up to 80 hours that is continual. So that would have to be all used in one block of time after they had the baby. And then also in that same policy is parental leave, which is separate from the post, postpartum recovery leave. And that would be for either any of the, the parents of the children, whether they adopt or whether they have a child, that would give up to 40 hours of intermittent leave, but it would have to be used within three weeks of the birth of the, birth or adoption of the child. This would be simultaneous with the Family Medical Leave Act in, in the leave that they use there. And those are really the highlights of the, the policy. Any questions on that specific?
Maybe just an addition of what Tyler said, that in the postpartum recovery and parental leave is not intended to be, I think, you know, it's not intended to be something that should take care of everything, but just an augmentation, right? Some additional, add, some additional time for the employees. Did you say the stat that the majority of our employees that have children, that have babies are really new? So they don't have a lot of leave time saved up. So this would be just a simple help, again, not intended to cover all of everything, but, but just a simple help.
So it's the 80 plus the 40?
For the birthing mother, yeah. They could have, the birthing mother would have up to 120 hours.
Three weeks.
Yeah.
And before this, we had nothing. Really? It's about freaking time.
Well, they were able to use their vacation time.
Still, it's about freaking time.
NFLA, right?
It sounds heartless.
It's about time.
Yeah, I mean...
It took this city council to get there.
I was just going to say, we can take some blame.
Absolutely, we can. We're, we're in it with you.
Read the policy binder.
Yes, it is, this is an awesome thing. Congrat, nice job. I'm glad someone looked into it. It was easy to sit on that committee and say, "Absolutely, we support this 100%." I'm speaking for myself, not...
Me too. Hey, we approved this already, you guys.
FYI.
You recommended it.
You recommended it and read it, we're good?
What are you saying, this time?
This time.
That's painful.
He went there.
He did. Payback, buddy. In this, yes. You're going to go through all of them? Or you're just going to stop?
Then the other, sorry, I didn't know if you want any, do you want any more conversation on that or we?
I dare you to say no.
Okay.
That's a good point. I think Seth brings up a good point. Most of people using this are new employee, newer employees to the city, right?
Yeah, by law, most employees would have the ability to take up to 480 hours of leave. And so if they, they always can use any leave that they've accrued, but this would just be that, that additional help. And, yeah.
Thank you. Another policy that I just wanted to highlight is one that we just need to update, and that is the post-incident testing. So when, when thankfully, these are few and far between, but once in a while, we do have incidents where an employee may damage a third party's property or may injure another person. And our current policy, when it comes to drug testing after an incident, states that if it's estimated that the damage is going to be more than $5,000, then you need to go and get tested after. So the, the hard part about that is we don't have a lot of great estimators. Most of them estimate pretty low, because they don't want to go get drug tested. And so, a, a, and we have great employees, I'm just being kind of tongue in cheek there. But the, the new proposed policy would be to make this more principle-based, where if there is an employee that's in an incident where there is a third party's property damaged or someone else is injured, then it would just be an automatic, hey, go and get tested just to be covered. So that's the major change there. The rest of the policy changes that, that are in front of you are really more cosmetic, just some miscellaneous cleanup, small improvements that add clarity, but don't really change the intent or the principles behind the policy. Any questions on any of those?
No.
Really good updates.
Great.
Thanks.
Well, testing is, I think, spot on. Like, it's, it's a protection for the employee as much as anything.
Any other questions for Mr. Jacobson?
Thanks.
Thank you, Tyler. Appreciate that. Appreciate all your, your good work on taking care of our employees and on that, on that committee. If there's no questions, I'd entertain a motion on item B.
Having read the entire thing this time, thanks, Jesse. I move to approve the resolution approving personnel policy changes.
Second.
And Jesse will second that.
Motion made by Councilman Marshall, seconded by Councilman Carden. It's a roll call vote. Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilman Took.
Yes.
And Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Item B is approved. Thank you. Takes us to item C, Resolution Amending Governing Documents for GLH Public Infrastructure District Numbers 1 and 2.
Mayor and council, this is just a housekeeping cleanup thing. When the city created the GLH Industrial Park Public Infrastructure Districts Number 1 and 2, the various documents had different, slight differences in the naming of it. So the resolution, the plat, the, the governing document itself, all use slightly different names. So this is to amend that governing document to clarify one name for the district, the districts, excuse me. And then also there was one clerical error in the name of one of the trustees. So gets the last name right of one of the trustees. And that is what this does. Any questions about this? The new, the new name...
Cleanup resolution.
Corrected name would be the GLH Industrial, excuse me, GLH Public Infrastructure District, Number 1 and 2.
Thank you, Vaughn.
Wait, wait, wait. The name was GLH Industrial Public Park Infrastructure District. Now it's different? Industrial's out. Industrial's out. Okay. It says GLH Public Infrastructure District. I made capital letters in there, I could not put them all together, so. Cool, thanks. Super easy.
I would entertain a motion for item C.
I move to approve the resolution amending governing documents for GLH Public Infrastructure Districts Numbers 1 and 2.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Euler. Tie goes to Councilman Took on the second. A roll call vote here. Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
And Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Item C of new business is approved. Takes us to item 10, our only discussion item tonight. This is the Atwood Acres Concept Review. Mr. David Anderson, can I, are you okay if I read the administrative content section of this, just to remind us in the public of, this is our first, first time, our first one... one since adding this to our agendas, the availability of this to our agendas, if you will? And, and so, we, we've directed staff as a council that would like to have guardrails in place, the amount of meeting time that we dedicate for these reviews, as these aren't public hearings. We've, we've come up with the 15-minute timeframe, so we'll give you five minutes to kind of address the council and talk about this. And then, Councilman Marshall brought it up to us that, that we want the clock back up, Jack, for 10 minutes after that, so we keep ourselves to 10 minutes up here. I don't know who thinks we could just wax strong, yeah, and be talking longer than that.
Can we also make, make Jack, like, hit the mute button on all microphones?
Mute button, lights.
Maybe everything's shut down.
Works for me.
Yeah, something, the shot clock, something.
Hour goes down.
But, yeah, just, just so you're, I know you guys have been made aware of that, but we're just reminding ourselves more than anything that this is, this is the first crack at this concept review-type discussion that we're having. Dave, anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, just to tee it up really quickly, the subject property in this case is a 23-acre site located just north of the recently created agricultural protection area, agriculture protection area in Leland. Kind of an L-shaped property as shown there. It's a combination of lots for single-family homes, I think 85 of those, and 104 town homes. And with that, we're really looking for the council's high-level feedback on the overall layout, kind of the nature of the, the housing product and that sort of a thing, and to be respectful of time, that's all I have.
Maybe, maybe before we jump in and start the clock or anything, I mean, we changed this, like you said, what, a month ago, maybe? This is really the first crack. Like, you haven't spent much time and effort and a lot of expense on what this layout might be. This is, hey, council, what do you think? And then it starts the process of all the checks and balances that it has to go through. So, like, there's no commitments by us, there's no, this is our opinion today, right? This is just super high-level, like you said, Dave, high-level feedback.
If I could add to that, yeah, no motions, no formal action of any kind. More often, we've had these kind of conversations with the planning commission. I'll even say, you know, of course, you could change your mind.
Sure.
Down the road. You'll see more detail in the future, so really just looking at what's available at this point in time, see if it, it fits in the area. Seth and I talked about this earlier in the week. He, he reminded me that this is the first really residential proposal that we've kind of seen in this part of the community, which makes us even more anxious to get your feedback, just kind of by way of, is this the right nature of development in addition to the neighborhood and that type of thing? That's where we're at.
So, I think, great point, Councilman Marshall, that this, this is a benefit, I think, to the whole community to have this discussion, but to the applicant, before you start going down the roads, of all the lovely meetings that you have ahead of you, to actually get to a, a project finality in some way, this, this is just a very high-level, you know, what do you think, with, with no motions and commitments and things like that. But I think for the public, too, it's, it's that part of, it doesn't mean you can't engage with us, you can, you can make phone calls, emails, whatever. We might not have a lot of information besides, as you guys go through the process of, of what the next steps are in next public meetings, which are public meetings, but, but it doesn't stop the public from being able to reach out to us and, and discuss that as, as well, even though it's not a public hearing tonight. Seth, did I cover?
Yeah, great.
About what our intent is?
I think it's really helpful, and you don't need to always review every project before it gets, goes through the process, but I think there are moments where some direction's needed, if staff's looking for some direction, or if there's some disagreement between the applicant and the staff on some interpretation, or how we think you might look at it, and where we're looking for some good direction, I think this is helpful. Yeah, Jack's got an image he can bring up that shows the, kind of the
Where we're at.
General area. Well, for the sake of anybody that may feel inclined to ask, we'll, we'll give you a zoomed-out view first. I was just being helpful.
I appreciate it. This is Spanish Fork, right?
Doesn't say no.
West side of Spanish Fork.
No, this is in Spanish Fork.
This is in Spanish Fork.
Yeah, just inside the boundary, so highlighted in that blue. Did I get it right, Matthew?
I-15 and 9th South. Perfect. Okay, thank you applicants for being here, we appreciate it, and we'll get going. Thank you.
Appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'm sorry, my name is Matthew Jorgensen, and I have good news for you. Even though we've spent many hours on this presentation, we also practiced it and whittled it down and timed it to five minutes. Okay? Now, if I can plug in, then I can show you exactly what I've got here. Looks like you have an HDMI, so we'll see. Is that okay? Will this take me live?
Let's see. Will it?
This will be the first time anyone...
You'll lose the timer, but Jack will have it.
Jack will have the timer.
We'll, we'll believe Matthew in his five minutes.
Okay, there we go.
Is that what you're looking at?
If you indulge me for just a quick second on here, I thought the presentation by, about Karen Payne was really touching. I actually have a very personal connection to Spanish Fork. 30 years ago, I taught guitar lessons to about 60 students for several years at Booth Brothers Music in their basement. Given the fact that was 30 years ago, that means that there's a lot of parents and that, you know, they have their own kids, they don't teach guitar lessons anymore, obviously. But, yeah, it was a special time during that time, and Spanish Fork is a special community. On top of that, Mayor Mendenhall's brother Cory actually directed our entire family in a choral experience that we had that was wonderful, that really built our kids' character and had good family time together. So, we have some, we have some connections, not just the developer coming in trying to do something in the ne, we do care about Spanish Fork. In fact, we considered moving here at one point, but we're still stuck in Lehigh with all the traffic. So, going forward, as far as Atwood Acres, Clinton Janice Harris are here tonight on the front row. Atwood actually is Clinton Mother's maiden name, so that's why we have, that's where the name comes from. This project for them is very important for their legacy. They'll continue to live in the neighborhood in their current home after everything is done. The Harrisons have owned this land for generations as well. So, as part of this presentation, we've invited Rod, Rod Staton, who's the division president, and Rulon Dutton, who are both with David, David Weekly Homes, who would be our proposed builder, so we give you an idea of what the product we're looking at doing. We also have Reed Dixon with us as well, who's our engineer, and all of them will be available for any questions that we have when we finish the presentation. We've lost it somehow. Somebody toggle me back up, or? It's over here. All right there. Okay, that works.
It's just an April Fools gag. Come on, Matthew, stay with it.
Hey, I could have done an April Fools, you guys, but, yeah.
Stay with it. Come on.
So, along those lines, David Weekly Homes, the look and feel of what we do in this neighborhood is very important to, to the city, or to the Harris family, and we also, we know it is to the city as well. And so, as part of this, we, we interviewed, why did we lose my thing again? Okay, Seth, more, more April Fools jokes?
All right, no. Do you, what, what program are you using?
PowerPoint.
Email that.
On a PC.
Yeah.
Email it over to them.
Email it to them. I don't know what's going on, and I'm not getting a thumbs up or down from the booth. I'm getting a negative ghostwriter. Patterns full.
Long as we're not.
That's why you're the first one.
Yeah, we're, we're going to work all the bugs out.
We have used the HDMI cord.
Ever.
Not in here, but in other meetings and stuff.
Longest five minutes we've ever had.
Be a long five. Yeah, it's going to be a long five.
Oh, sorry.
It's, it's football minutes, yeah.
Well played.
Very well. Last five minutes of a...
NCAA championship game.
Yep.
While we're waiting on the, while we're waiting on the technical difficulties on there, we'll give you a little bit, I'm going to talk a little bit about David Weekly while that comes up. We want to, like, like I said, we, we interviewed more than a dozen builders to do that, and David Weekly met the quality requirements that the Harris family and we believe the city would, would have as well. So, one thing that was mentioned in the DRC meeting, is they said, well, we're looking at your concept, the concept that you've presented could turn out to be something really good, or it could be a disaster, depending on what the elevations look like and the type of product that you're, you're developing. And so, that's why we've brought, brought David Weekly and, and telling a little bit more about them, so you guys will know. And that's a picture. That's a picture of what we'll have to put in the area if we don't get enough houses in there, and we have to do like $2 million homes in the area for low density. Just kidding. But, David, but, I mean, that's, the reason we, we show that, that's indicative of a lot of the finishes that they have as well. They do really high-end finishes, even on properties and products that are, would be quote "affordable." And so, and that's one of the things that's, the things that drew us to, to them as well. David Weekly actually is a national builder with an expanding Utah presence. They've been here for 13 years, and they're one of the builders that was invited to build in Daybreak. They're building eight communities in Utah right now, and their standard, their quality standards are really high, so much so that the, they're developing Beacon Point, which is the LDS Church's master plan development around the Saratoga Springs Temple. So, to give you an idea of some of the, the product that we propose to do, this is what we're looking at related to townhomes. When we showed that to the Harris family, Janice Harris said, I love it. So, like I said, townhomes are not townhomes or not townhomes. It depends on what you're building, and we think that can be a beautiful project, especially coupled with what they're going to put inside as well. Now, related to the concept plan, what we've done on here to do what we're trying to do with the concept that you've all seen on there, it would require a zone change to R3, which is consistent with the current general plan that we have. 189 units on there would also be consistent with the general plan as well. Actually, as we looked at it, we realized that total acre, excuse me, total acreage on the property is just over 25 acres if we include the, the home for the Harrises, because that will be, that will connect to city services, so that'll be part of it. So, that means that our 189 units actually is less than what could be allowed in that zone, or in, you know, in an R3 zone under the general plan. And then lastly, to do that, we would need a, we'd work with the master plan development overlay, which obviously is in the, in municipal code of the city as well. And we're going to talk about why we'd want to approve eight units per acre, as we're trying to do. The number one reason, as it relates to the citizens of, of Spanish Fork, would be that we're trying to accomplish affordability and opportunity to own a home whilst, without sacrificing quality. Our location right there is fairly close to I-15. Large lots are not going to sell there, and it's not good for affordability anyway. So, if we, and we can talk about some of the specifics, units per acre. For example, if we go down to a 5.34 units per acre, that, that would assume a, a lot size of close to a fifth of an acre. We can build a $900,000 home on a fifth of an acre. That's not affordable, actually, probably won't sell in that area, and I don't think, it's not good for affordability or opportunity for people who would like to be in that area. The other thing that we would have has to do with, another reason why we want to have a higher unit count, is we have significant off-site expenses that we're going to have to do, more than I've ever had on any other project. You can see all the lines, all the rainbow colors, and see where everything has to come from. Everybody knows about the sewer pumping station. We've got to gravity-feed it all the way to the pumping station, just to have it pump right past us again to do that, and that's just the reality of the situation, and we'll have significant costs there. We, we don't even know the total effect of what that's going to be yet. We just know that it'll be substantial. The other thing is that on the road of 2000 West, that will be widened at some point, we will lose some land to that, and we'll have to bear the cost of that. And lastly, our understanding is, is that with the Leland Meadows subdivision, we may have an east-west connector that would go through our property, that would be larger than we normally would have, have done, and that'll be an additional expense. So, all of those things, in conjunction with trying to make it affordable for other people that are coming in the community, are the reasons that we're looking for this unit count. The other thing on here, as far as surrounding land use on here, we believe that it's not outside the realm of things that are currently being considered. What you see to the left in the green right there is an overlay of part of the Leland Meadows subdivision that Arrive is working on. You can see on there, they had significant challenges to try to lay out that project, just mainly because of the shape of the land, but you can see they have some, you know, decent amount of homes on there. If you look at that and compare at least to our single-family lots that we have, we feel that we even have a better livability factor, especially per, you know, privateness in ours with what we're trying to do. So, that's what we have there. And the last slide that I will do here, as we look at criteria, what we're asking for, obviously, this, we, there's not approval tonight, we're not asking for an exact number tonight, nor, we don't expect to get that. What we would like to know, though, is the criteria that the council would use to consider or approve eight units per, per acre. Since that's in the general plan already, there is a range there, we want to know what that criteria would be. So, now, some of the things that we've looked at, I mean, we're willing to add city amenities, we're going to have a, we're going to have a detention pond that's going to be fairly shallow because of the water table. We could turn that to a park, and we're happy to talk to the Parks Department for suggestions. And we're willing to do whatever we can to try to make this pencil so it works for, for us, it makes it affordable, and it works for the city on what you're trying to do. So, the thing that we're looking at, we hope the council will look at this and say that, you know, the most important issue here is not necessarily the number of homes, it's what the neighborhood's going to look like and how it's going to impact the city. And, I mean, we could put 100 homes and make them look terrible, but I think you'd rather have really scrutinize us on the product and how we're going to do that, and what it's going to look like, and work together with the city to try to make this work so that the project can pencil. So, with that, I'll be glad to entertain any questions or comments, or for me, or anybody who's here. Yeah. Oh, yeah, and this is, Katie's going to pass out a, this is David Weekly's brochure, so you can...
Thank you. Thank you, Matthew. Appreciate that. Sorry for the technical difficulties getting started there.
We worked through it.
Yeah, important area of, of town, obviously, like you talked about, not just for the city, but, but for the landowners there as well, obviously. So, we appreciate, appreciate you talking about that. Questions, discussion, questions for the applicant? Feel free to ask the, ask the applicant questions. Any discussion up here at first glance from the council?
I'll take a stab and just say at first glance, I'm, I would, just first glance, okay, with the density, I would for sure want to see a park in that area, and I just like the diversity, so you're not driving into a neighborhood like this and everything's looking the exact same, so whether that's color, styles, whatnot. So, the diversity in a, a park is what I would want to look for in this.
So, you like our idea of doing a park with the detention basin and trying to do...
Yeah, wherever it would work, whatever staff would suggest on that.
Dave, real quick, do we have in the city anywhere else where a detention basin has been doubled as a park?
Yes, Sunny Ridge, just south of Fourth North, there's a detention basin as a park included in that. There are probably some others.
Hey, Dave, is that one by Sierra Bonita?
As well.
Referring to?
Yeah, Sierra Bonita is, I think the park by Tyler's house is. Yeah, Sierra Bonita is. I think the park by Tyler's house is, uh...
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's not...
So it's not uncommon?
Yeah, it occasionally requires a little bit of maintenance. You might have some soft fall material that floats away occasionally, truthfully, and that kind of a thing, but, um, it's, uh, I think a good way to get additional use out of that space.
Well, since it's so shallow, we'll have to make it a lot bigger than we would want to, which actually lends itself better to a park, to more space for the city.
What are groundwater levels like out in this area?
Right, where the detention pond is, we've got, uh, from native, we've got six feet down is the groundwater, and then it goes, is, it'll go as deep when we go to the far north part at eight, eight feet, so it's pretty high. So we're not planning on basements at this point.
So detention basin, how, Cory, maybe you can answer that. What are we looking at as far as depth for a detention basin?
Typically, a water depth for three feet max type of thing of, of most of our ponds, um, when they're open to the public and that. Most of the, the parks I'm aware of near detention, they, parks typically like them elevated above the water, um, which, you know, again, is a, a space thing, but they, they typically like equipment and that outside of the zone that would be inundated with water. So something to consider as you're looking at that.
One thing to keep in mind is that, um, my engineer's here too, so he can answer this specifically if we need to on here, but my understanding is they're designed for a hundred-year flood, so, um, we, and, I don't know, we've all driven around the city, see lots of detention basins, very seldom do we see them full of water, although sometimes they might be soggy, so, you know, but yeah.
I don't wanna spend all our ten minutes on the detention basin, but that's definitely something we wanna look into. My initial thoughts, just when I looked at the plan the first time and opened it up, was, um, first thing that I didn't like was the Stacy mentioned, Councilwoman Beck mentioned, that we'll, we appreciate and like variety. And when I see the widths of the frontage, that they're all, looks like exactly the same, about forty feet each, that's one thing that I think I would appreciate a change in, and that some of the frontages are, are different widths, not exactly forty feet on, on each of them.
Let me ask you if you would, cause very valid point, as far, we don't wanna have everything all cookie cutter. What if, I mean, we could vary some of those, but what if we also, if we just make sure that every product, cause obviously if we build the same house, the whole time we'll have the problem that you're talking about, Councilman Euler. But if we had elevations on every house was different, or we had several on there that we varied, so it, you had a better feel, and maybe we pop one in there that's fifty feet here and there to do that, to just mix it up, does that...
Yeah, I definitely would, would like to see it broken up a little bit.
You, uh, in your presentation, you mentioned affordable, uh, a bit. Do you have an idea of what you're wanting to sell these for?
So yeah, so we're, right now, I mean, it'll, obviously it'll vary with the market as things go on here, but as far as for townhomes, to, I mean, we're, market right now is about four-twenty for a townhome and about five-ten for a single family.
Gotcha. So my first, um, look at this, um, the concept and just kind of these type of projects right now is, I don't love that we put all residential in one area and then all townhomes in one area. I like the, what are we calling it, the complete neighborhood concept. Um, Dave and his team really know what that looks like, and I, I think that we have an opportunity with that amount of land to make a really good neighborhood that has a mixed-use concept, where you don't just have all your townhomes in one section and all your houses in another, that you mix it throughout. Because I think that gives a, a neighborhood, it takes away what Kevin was just saying, but also it makes the neighborhood feel more complete and also doesn't put all of the, um, the im- impact of density together. It, it spaces it out through the project. Also, to your other question that you kind of went to, I would prefer to go a little bit maybe into the density, uh, or down in the density, um, not necessarily pushing limits in everything that we are always doing, that's just kind of, it feels like that's what we always get, is it's, how much can we get, and let's go to the highest peak. And so if we can figure out a way to make some of that work, that would be my, my preference on that.
Okay, two, two comments if I can on that. Um, so excellent point on there as far as the variety on there. We're open to ideas related to mixing, you know, the towns in between the single families and doing that, um, although, um, I like to defer to smarter people than I am related to that, and so I, we would, we would wanna have David Weekly, who's built beautiful communities, cause they've gotta sell them. So, I mean, they're more invested in this than all the rest of it, but we would want to have their input, and we would take, um, we would take your suggestion on there, bring that in and say, "This is the situation," but we'd love to have a discussion with you where you can ask them and push back against that. Um, the, the thing that we've seen to do what you're talking about, it'll be most flexible if we can do a master plan development overlay on there. The neighborhood one could work, but we probably need some variances from that to get, because of some of the other constraints that we have, but we're definitely willing to, uh, take a look at that.
And I think it is an overlay to do the ma-, uh, complete neighborhood, right, Dave?
Yeah.
It is as well.
So, yeah, we'd have to do it either way.
So there's a couple of things that I look at when developments come in front of me. First thing that I look at is the general plan. And does what you're proposing match what's in the general plan? I think it does, uh, even if you're asking for the R3, that still falls within our medium density. And so I think as far as meeting, uh, the general plan, I think you're good there. The second thing I look at is, is infrastructure connections. And you showed where the sewer line runs on the east end of the property. Uh, what about the other, other infrastructure as far as, uh, water, um, stormwater? What's that looking like?
We can ha-, I can sho-, I have that on, on the presentation if I can. Take me live and take it back to that. I mean, excellent question, yeah, that. So let's see, so specifically, if you, you can look at our, which utility specifically was your...
Stormwater, so...
Stormwater, okay, the stormwater is, it's hard to see, but it's the light green line that goes parallel with the sewer. Um, sewer's gonna go in the middle of the street, and then presumably the, the stormwater's gonna be going, you know, to the side of the street like it would. And we're gonna have to take that and flow that down. We've been talking with Josh and engineering to try to figure out, you know, what we need to, size of pipes and what that's gonna flow into and how we're gonna do that.
Cory, do you know offhand the GIS that's on, on our website? Do you know if that's just not updated? It's not showing that the stormwater runs down that same, same road that the sewer's in.
Currently, there, none of these are, utilities are built other than the forest main going back north, so I, I think what's depicted here is to bring that to the site, they would have to build it.
So your int-, your intent is to get all of the utilities wherever they end currently to get them to your property?
Exactly, so that's why it's so crazy expensive.
It's not gonna be cheap.
No. No, you can see why we're saying, hey, you know, if we can work with the city, you give us the unit count, let's make it beautiful and do that. Um, let's, you know, let's make the sausage together on there, and then we'll work on getting, cause we've gotta pay for those utilities.
So I'm, I'm curious, have you looked into what the costs of getting utilities to your property are gonna be?
We're working on that one day by day, so what we've, we've done is, I'm not gonna know exactly what that's gonna be until we have, it's kind of the catch-22, until we have the full concept of plan, and then we'll have the, uh, preliminary subdivision, and our engineer will create that and we'll fully bid it. Now, can we get some rough numbers by just asking a contractor, "Okay, we want a ten-inch water line, how long is this?" Yes, we can. We're very preliminary in that one, so we don't have exact numbers even on a, we just know it's gonna be really expensive and more than we probably project. So, yeah, great question.
Councilman Marshall and Councilman Took?
Sure, I'll take a shot. Um, the general plan is medium density, three and a half to eight units acre. Um, you come in, ask for eight, not a big fan of eight in this location. It's pretty much all by itself at this point. It is sort of a, you know, nothing you can do about it, cause you're the first ones out there, so I understand that, you know, there's nothing around there because nothing of mine's built yet, but, um, I don't like eight, I don't like density like this out there. I think you can take advantage of the complete community overlay and do something much better than eighty-five, four-thousand-square-foot lots. Put some variety in there. Um, I think I would give you a ton of flexibility to put, I mean, pick any of these homes and put one out there, along with affordable homes as well. Like, be creative about it. This layout today is not created enough for me to get to eight units per acre. I don't think the groundwater is six feet deep, there's no way it is. It's not, not more than six inches in most of that places out there. I mean, it's, you can see the water across the street. I don't like when an applicant comes and says, "We could do a really terrible job and make it look bad, or we could put high density in there and make it look good." Like, that's just, that's an argument that I don't, I don't appreciate. It's just not a good argument for, for, for me to say, "Oh yeah, well, you can do a bad job, so I'm gonna let you do a bad job." Just do a good job, period. But eight's too high. But I'm one vote, so, that's me.
Yeah, I would really echo what's, oh, sorry, what?
I'm sorry, can I, can I address that really quickly?
Well, he's only got a minute and a half, so go, London.
He might say some of the same thing.
Maybe, I'll be, I'll, I won't take that much time. I'd like to echo what's been said, though, yeah, I, I, I'm not a big fan of everything how it is right now, and I, I'm, I like the variety that we're, we're looking for. I don't believe it's here. You know, when you look at almost two hundred units, um, they just feel very cookie cutter-ish to me, if that's even the right phrase, but just, uh, I just don't think, i- i- in the high, uh, eight, eight per, uh, eight units per, yeah, is, is a lot for there. One quick, uh, one quick question, are, are there, are there backyards, and what size are we kind of looking at for these units? I know they're not in this initial plan, at least that I could see, but I just curious.
There are, in fact, with all of our, all the single families that we're doing on, that we're trying to maximize the, the backyard, the lots are a hundred and feet, a hundred feet deep, so we're trying to do that. Townhomes, not so much, but the, the, you know, the single family, yeah, that we're, exactly, we're trying to do that. I guess our point, and, uh, Councilmember Marshall on there, I mean, good point, yeah, we're, no, we're not gonna say, "We'll just come in and build something nasty." I'm just saying, what my, um, what I'm trying to say on there is that we will build quality on there so we can deserve the criteria, cause the, the thing we wanna do, we wanna know the criteria that would put us at, at the eight units. So it's not, cause again, I don't really think the, the council, I don't, the city, I don't, I think you care as much about the actual number as you do about the quality. And so be very, you know, make us do the quality, put, put restrictions on there and say, "Okay, did you get your eight units for the criteria?" Make that very stringent to do that. But help us afford the costs that we've talked about to do that, cause we're, just as this is our first meeting doing this, we're also pioneering the off-sites that will help all sorts of people coming later that, and you say, "Well, there's pioneering agreements, you might get reimbursed." We might, we may not. That's a huge hassle. It's up to, and my understanding is up to thirty years, so we, we, we're not even penciling that one in. We don't know. We're, we're just trying to put together a good project, and, and we're open to all sorts of ways to solve that, so if, uh...
I, I appreciate that. I, I, I'm good with a, a few, of, a four-thousand-square-foot lot. Don't get me wrong, eighty-five of them pushes the boundaries for me. That's all I'm saying. We need a four-thousand-square-foot lot in our community. My kids look at, live in Eagle Mountain because they couldn't, we didn't have a four-thousand-foot lot in Spanish Fork. So I'm fine with that, but we have some ordinances that allow some flexibility and some creativity and maximize them. If you wanna put that kind of density out there, which I'm still not a fan of, but you gotta maximize it. It can't be every single thing looks exactly the same. From a square, from a space perspective.
Excellent point. We would love to come back and forth and, and just show the specifics of those, um, saying, "Okay, we, we take that," Congressman, or Congressman.
I like that.
I just elevated you on there, so.
Thank you, Matthew. Appreciate your presentation. Appreciate, uh, appreciate everyone, including the, the builder, the, the landowner, and the applicant in, in here running through this with us. And, uh, and like I said, we're, we're available. You have our information as you continue to go through the process and, and look at this. Please, please reach out and, and go through the process.
We'd love to do that, cause we, we're glad to throw it out and you guys beat it up and, "Okay, let's do this," or maybe we could do that, and, and...
Absolutely, yeah. It's, I like this process. It's gonna be a little bit clunky, but I think you got some good feedback on how to start this thing.
We appreciate, this is, this is exactly what we were hoping for tonight, so, yeah.
Thanks, Matthew.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Matthew. Thanks again.
Excuse me. Okay. That's, uh, our only discussion item tonight, so we do have some closed meeting, uh, agenda items that we need to discuss in closed session. If there's anything else, Seth, anything that needs to come before this body before we go there? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to adjourn to closed session, or meeting, to discuss the purchase, exchange, or lease real property strategy sessions to discuss pending reasonably imminent litigation and discussion regarding, uh, deployment of security personnel, devices, and systems in the Explorer Room.
Okay.
Motion made by Councilman Carden, seconded by Councilman Marshall, uh, roll call vote here. Councilman Took?
Yes.
Councilman Carden?
Yes.
Councilman Euler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
And Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.